If you want to just reopen the meeting, it's officially recording now.
Good.
All right, the meeting's open now.
Okay, I move that we accept the minutes from our January meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
First thing on the agenda is Long Bill Holmes and Notice of Intent for the Development of Pontus Hill Subdivision.
Okay, they've asked for a continuance until March 17th meeting. So I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing till our March 17th meeting.
I second.
We need public input.
Oh, the public input.
Nancy Gulat speaking for the Dighton Stormwater Committee. Is anybody here from Long Bill Holmes? No? What I wanted to bring to the attention of the committee and also to the general public and to this developer, at the last meeting you allowed me to read a letter that was prepared by Stormwater Agent Todd Pilling in reference to this particular development. I watched your meeting and I heard them ask the conservation agent not to read it. They were gone by the time I got here at the meeting. You allowed me to read the record, that his report into the public record. What I want, and the reason I'm asking to speak tonight is, they were at the Stormwater Committee meeting the day before your meeting. They came to your meeting and got a continuance. They could have told Mr. Pilling, do not do anything with the plans. They didn't. He wrote the report and then they would not allow your agent to read it. My point is, we've got a certain amount of time to get things done. They're not the only development that comes before all the boards. It was extremely inconsiderate to not tell the Stormwater Agent not to read those plans and to tell him, don't write a report. He doesn't need to read plans and write reports for practice. We all know that. So I hope they watch this meeting and get the message. If you deliver plans to the Board of Health, they will be reviewed and a report will be written. But we don't need town employees tied up writing reports and reviewing plans that the developer later says, forget that, those aren't the plans. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak and I wanted to state publicly, there has to be more consideration of town and Dighton employees and boards in general. We all, we all have a lot to do and we need, don't need to waste time. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna vote on it. Motion was made and seconded?
Yeah. Motion was made and seconded?
Yes.
Second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Continued hearing. Compared, what's this, Conservation Subdivision to construct 135 single-family homes on Forest Street, Joshua Glasses?
It's a comprehensive, not conservation. Comprehensive. Oh yes, sorry. You're right, you're correct. You're correct, it's a conservation subdivision, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep. No one's here for that, they requested a continuance.
I move that we continue the hearing until March meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one, Reed Brothers Farm Limited Liability Partnership.
They're not here for that one, but I just wanted to bring to your attention what's happening, an update. I asked Outback Engineering for an update and they're moving along with the restoration filing. Bottom line is, because the project's in an ORW, they're required to file an ENF, which is an environmental notification form, greater than 1,000 square feet of disturbance alteration requires them to do that. So they're in the process of filing for that and the water quality certificate for the restoration as well as the Amicore permit. They expect at least the MEPA portion to take about 60 days. So that's why he, he requested the continuance.
Did, did he give a date, whether it's be March or April?
April 21st is what he's expecting.
Okay, I'll move that we continue the hearing until March 21st?
April.
April 21st?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Notice of Intent Request from Russ Moserelli.
They are requesting a continuance due to the fact that they are updating their plans per the Board of Health.
I move that we continue the hearing until March 17th?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Notice of Intent from Simons Construction.
Yep, they've also requested a continuance due to the fact that they're trying to redesign the septic system and until they do that, they're gonna hold off on coming back to us.
Is...
So the 17th, I got another continuance request from Frontline.
Okay, so the notice of intent has been filed, we have a file number and was there any recommended date on their part when they would have that done?
Yes, this is...
Why is the file number not here on the, in the minutes?
Simons Construction.
Do you have the minute, you had a file number on that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I have the file number here. Simons Construction, 0 County Street, the file number is 017-0...
Slow down, slow down, 017.
-0448.
448?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay, and what date did they think they would have everything done by?
March 17th.
Okay, I move that we continue the hearing until March 17th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Continued hearing from Michael?
Binder.
Binder. They're here.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
All set. Carry on, please.
For the record, Brian Dunn with MBL Land Development and Permitting. I'm the principal of the firm with, our office is at 5 Bristol Drive in Southeastern Massachusetts. This evening is Tracy Duarte, our chief civil engineer, and the applicant, Michael Binder. As you know, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, you have a single-family house lot in front of you for, for the proposed driveway that we're actually altering, ordering land subject to flooding. And the reason why we're, we're doing that is a request of the fire department to gain access, wider access to the single-family house lot. If we weren't requested to do that, we would not be filling that. We're also replicating that same bordering land subject to flooding on the lot attaching to the floodplain. All of the rest of the work, the remaining part of the driveway, septic system, home, ingredient, is way outside the 100-foot buffer zone. So based on that information, I know that we've gone back and forth with some different peer review consultants and some issues with that. We would respectfully request that you close the public hearing, issue an order of conditions with any special conditions that are appropriate for you to review the plans or your consultant to review the plans and for us to make any changes to those plans, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine, Charlie.
I have no problem with that. I think we should close the hearing. Matter of fact, I'll make a motion that we close the hearing and issue an order of conditions for this property.
I need the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
A request for a determination of habitability from... Please ignore providence.
Okay, this one has been withdrawn.
They can see now.
And they have, this is the, RDA. This is an RDA and they, and they withdrew it and they, and they did a notice of intent.
Okay. So we can just run a line right through that. Are they here?
Right here.
You're right there.
I'm not sure, Bill, if we need to accept their withdrawal and then, just in case, let me make a motion that we accept their withdrawal
Fine.
of the RDA and to resubmit as a notice of intent.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Yeah, I got it too. You can have that, thank you.
Okay. Where is 3423 Shop Slot Road?
Almost to the Swansea Line.
Well, the Shop Slot Road is the Swansea Line.
Well, it's on the left side.
It's across from the Ferry Farm, right?
Can't, can't read your lips, Lisa.
It's across from the Ferry Farm.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know where that is. Fine.
Okay.
Carry on, please.
When was the house built?
No idea.
Yeah.
I'm Brad Fitzgerald from SFG Engineering with the Project Engineers. It's a septic system repair, it's an existing house, I don't know how long, but I'm sure it's been there quite a while. The existing system now is over in this area here. We have a bordering vegetated wetland that runs behind the house, curves down the side here.
Where, where, excuse me, where's the road?
The road is right here.
Okay, thank you.
So, we've got a well back here and we've got the wetlands that run around like this around the house. As I said, the existing system kind of runs over towards this wet, this portion of the wetland. We'd originally designed a system going that way, discovered the wetlands were bigger than we thought, so we had to redesign the system, turn it this way. It's a pump system, we use a monolithic septic tank, monolithic pump chamber, pumping up to a field of infiltrators. We're gonna be 25 feet from the edge of the BVW and about 78 feet from the existing well, so we need variances from Board of Health in order to do this. But there's nowhere else to do this system, there's not enough, not enough room on this side of the house and anything behind the house would just get even closer to the well. So we're trying to balance off between getting a variance to the well, getting a variance to the wetlands and kind of center it in between what we're comfortable with.
Do you have approval for this design from the Board of Health?
He has not approved it yet, no.
Has he seen it?
He has. And when we revised the, we had to revise wetland line, I did that this week, so I handed him the new plans today. He has no, he indicated he had no issues with the plan that I submitted.
When you submitted today?
I submitted a, a plan with a slight revision, no change in the septic system at all, so the previous plan that he's had, he's looked at, but he was reserved in comment until after tonight.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So yeah, I did a site visit and I, I made the determination that I believe what he had as an isolated, did connect with the larger wetland, so Brad did make that change, so I'm happy with that. It's a septic repair, we obviously want to take care of these. I had a conversation with Mr. Pilling today and he was in the, he agreed with me that we should move forward and approve this. Hopefully he doesn't have any changes, but it didn't sound like he would. So he gave me a copy, it was a February 16th that you have. I know you emailed it to me, but I grabbed a printed one.
That's what this one is?
Yeah.
And the only change between January 24th and this plan was to make this part of the wetland instead of being an isolated area that was here. We, we, our partners, they called this an isolated area, because they should decide, determine that there was more, more hydric soils in between, so we just connected the line and made it all one big bordering vegetated wetland. So that's the only change to his plan, nothing changed on the leaching area, elevations, location, nothing at all changed from the plan that's been on file since January.
And there's no other place to put the repair, so...
No, anything, anywhere else would be closer to the well and we're already less than 100 feet from the well with this system. So there's really nowhere else to go.
Can we approve that without the approval from the Board of Health with the well?
Yeah, with the understanding that they may have to come back and get us to amend that order.
Yeah, it's one of those things we...
Is that ITian or Dougwell? Do you know?
I don't know. My partner was out there, he did the perk test, I haven't been out on site. But yeah, we, we just, we need to get your approval so Todd can then approve it. And as Lisa said, if he had any major changes, we'd have to come back to you.
All right.
It's one of those, you gotta pick one or the other to go first, you know?
Yeah, he wanted to make sure we were okay with the wetland line first, you and I am, so, I am now.
Well, you're just dumping the basemerge. I move that we accept the plan and issue an order of conditions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm away next week, so...
Motion carries.
Just give me a couple weeks.
Okay.
It's on the, it's on the agenda. If you want a copy tonight.
Certificate of Compliance for 2215 Maple Street?
Okay.
Okay.
Where is it? Anybody here from Maple Street?
No, nobody, nobody's gonna be here for that one. I have that for you guys to sign, though, I did a site visit. I conducted a site visit with County Street Holdings. Brandon?
Yeah?
Who's the owner of County Street Holdings?
Where?
Duvali. Is it Robert Duvali?
Maple Street.
No, I'm just asking who the owner of County Street Holdings, that's Duvali. Is his first name Robert Duvali?
There's a Ryan Duvali?
No. Thought it was Bob. In any case...
I can't say that I know. County Street, what, what project is this?
It's not County Street, it's County Street Holdings. And it's probably a site you flagged on Maple Street, a house across from Vernalpool. We're just doing a certificate of compliance.
Okay.
I'm forgetting the gentleman's first name.
Is there a John Duvali?
Is it John Duvali?
John, it must be John.
We're working on something for 2215 Maple Street?
This is it?
Yeah.
This is it.
Maple, not Swamp Maple?
No, Maple Street.
It is Maple Swamp. All right, so anyways, they submitted a request and I have the certificate of compliance draft here for you. They, they deserve a full certificate of compliance.
Okay, I'll make a motion then that we issue a certificate of compliance for 2215 Maple Street under the file number 17-428.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I was dealing with Mount Hope.
You know these guys, they make a new LLC for every project they got.
All right, next thing on the agenda is we will discuss an extended order of conditions, two years for Clearway Energy Group, 420 and 1522 Maple Street.
Okay.
Let's discuss it.
That is pretty straightforward. You guys approved this last year and it's already due for expiration. If you'd like, I can read the letter dated January 21st to the Dighton Conservation Commission regarding Dighton Solar Project. Request to extend order of conditions, mass DEP file number 0170396. Dear Conservation Commission members, Clearway Energy Group LLC respectfully submits this request to extend the approved amended order of conditions for the Dighton Solar Project. The current expiration date of the order is May 25th, 2022. Construction of the project is currently anticipated to commence on or about March 1st, 2022. There is a kickoff meeting coming up if anybody would like to go by the way.
Is this the original property?
Yeah. On Williams, 1050 Williams. And continue through the calendar year. Final soil stabilization, vegetation cover and establishment of all plantings could extend into and possibly through the 2023 growing season. Based on this schedule, we respectfully request a two-year extension to May 25th, 2024 to ensure adequate time for completion of all the items with a buffer in the event of unanticipated delays. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions during your review or require additional information, sincerely yours, David P. Cowan, Project Development. C.C. to Dan Von Almen of Clearway Energy Group. So yeah, this extension, you guys remember signing it last year, an amended, amended order you had originally issued in order...
But there hadn't been two years prior to that.
Yeah. So now here we are.
I'll move that we issue an extended order of conditions for two years to Clear Energy Group.
Clearway.
Clearway Energy Group.
The date it's extended to is May 25th, 2024.
Can we issue a two-year?
Yep.
Okay, I thought it was a one.
No, you can. No more than three.
Okay.
Two years. You made a motion, Jim?
Motion made.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 0 Horton Street.
Wait a minute, you're going too fast for me here.
What'd you say, Lisa?
Hold on a second. So at this point, that one, 0 Horton Street, map 7 lot 22, DEP file number 0170433. They're requesting an amended order and at this point, all is, I'm asking the commission do is determine whether you would like them to file a new notice of intent or if we can just have them come to the next meeting and contact the abutters and we'll do a legal notice so that what the work is, the work is, is moving the replication area and expanding it. So at this point, I don't think it deserves a new notice of intent, I'd like to keep this thing moving for them because they've already been delayed so long. So if you discuss it and then make a decision that yes or no, you'd like them to file a new notice of intent, otherwise they can come back before us and request an amended order and do it the simplified way, which is have them notify the abutters and not pay an additional fee.
Well, I mean, we've been there so many times that I for one know certainly what their request is and I think that they are now on line to do it properly and to do it well, that amended order of conditions would be, would be fine.
So that amended order would be the route and I'll just notify them to plan on submitting in time for the next meeting.
Was that a motion?
I will make a motion. I move that we require an amended order of, let's see, an amended order of conditions to the Horton Street project. File number 17-433.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To discuss a request by SFG Associates. Boland Drive.
Yeah, so this one we issued on our December 21st, 2021 meeting. For whatever reason, the signature page that I sent him appeared to be a copy and the registry would not record it, so he's just asking for a fresh copy, so it, we already issued it.
Okay, so I'll, we just have to sign then?
Yes, which is just a copy for you to sign. It's the same exact thing we submitted.
Different colored pencil.
So there's no new appeal period or anything?
Okay, and just in, just in the event that it's necessary, I move that we reissue a signed copy of the order of conditions. Jack?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we don't have to print. That'll go quicker. Okay. BWC Greenbrook LLC.
Okay.
Tremont Middle.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were coming at all, I was just pretty much gonna tell...
And he has an appropriate jacket on.
But you can...
He does?
Green.
Green, oh.
Green jacket.
Everybody, oh, all right.
Good evening, gentlemen. Would you like me to read Rich's letter?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name's Chris Knight with Blue Wave Solar.
Give us your last name, Chris.
Knight, K-N-I-G-H-T.
Yep.
So first I'll, I'll read an email from Rich Riccio, Field Engineering. He's our engineer for the project, which was sent to Ms. Caladonia earlier in the week. And this is related to the Tremont Street, Middle Street solar project. Good afternoon, Lisa, I'm emailing on behalf of our client, BWC Greenbrook LLC, with regards to the above referenced project, which consists of a proposed solar array on the subject parcels. Attached, please find the approved plan referenced in the order of conditions and the latest site layout plan, which has gone through a few iterations through the design process in accordance with condition number 14 of the order of conditions and condition five of the Wetland Act Special Conditions. We are submitting this request to determine if the proposed changes are significant enough to require a new filing or amended order of conditions. As the attached plans show, there are no changes to the scope of work within the 100-foot buffer zone to the jurisdictional areas on the properties. We are actually removing a number of panels from close proximity to the buffer zone in the revised plan to provide a more efficient layout. Finally, we have changed the interior cul-de-sac turnaround to a T-turnaround as shown. None of these changes will result in additional impacts to the areas subject to jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act or Town of Dighton Wetland Bylaw. And we respectfully request that the Conservation Commission accept the minor modification site plan last revised November 11th, 2021 for their files. last revised November 11th, 2021, for their files. These changes will be reflected on the as-built plans once the proposed solar array is constructed. So we were before the planning board back in January and requested two minor modifications to our site plan. Those were the removal of some panels to the south of the project, and then an adjustment to the emergency vehicle turnaround from this circular cul-de-sac to the T turnaround. That was approved by the planning board back in January, and as Rich mentioned in his letter, because of that change coming before you tonight, to understand what may be required or if.
Yeah, so at this point, it's, we're not gonna really discuss the changes. We're just gonna discuss the process like we just did for Horton Street. So I recommended, due to the DEP policy, that we just have them not, I don't think we need to have them file a new notice of intent, but I would like the abutters to be notified and us to put it in the newspaper for them for the amended order. So they'll come to the next meeting and do this formally in a hearing, the same presentation, but he'll have his plans and he'll.
But is the work outside the buffer zone that's being changed?
Still requires an amended order, yeah.
I guess our understanding is there, it may not require an amended order of conditions. I think per the, per Condition 5, if we make a change, we have to come before the commission, and if the changes are significant enough, that there may be required an amended order of conditions or NOI, but if the changes are not significant enough, that it may not be required. And all of the changes are outside of the buffer, and there is no change to the existing footprint of the array.
That doesn't sound like he needs to file a new notice of intent.
No, not a new notice of intent. That's not what I'm recommending.
No, I think even for us, I don't think amended would even be necessary. If it's outside the buffer zone.
Well, then they'd be, they'd be working under not a valid permit because the whole point of them having an order of conditions is attaching it to a plan, and if the plan they're working off of is different, then they're under potential violation. And then when they come back for their certificate of compliance, it makes it a little sticky.
Okay.
It's just a formality at this point.
Okay, yeah, we just wanted to make sure the commission was aware of the change and understand what the next steps are.
Yeah.
Okay, so amended would be the safe way and most expedient?
Yeah, so what I would suggest is in the next two weeks out, at the latest, you guys file, and not file, but you formally, yeah, you have to notify the abutters again.
Okay.
So within 300 feet of the property line, and then Charlie will put the legal in, and you guys will pay the bill for that.
Okay.
And we'll be able to see the plans at the next meeting and ask you any additional questions, see if anyone in the audience has any questions.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all.
Okay, I move then that we require an amended order of conditions for the solar array proposal, SC 17-432.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chris, is that, does that still have agricultural components to the project?
Yes, sir.
So there's gonna be crops grown underneath the array, the panels?
Yeah, the current plan is for Mr. Kerbal to be involved with his squash and then some rotational grazing as well, and that was part of the plan as it was amended before the planning board was to support those agricultural operations.
Okay, no, I had heard that, but I hadn't, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's review and approve an invoice 75591 in the amount of $1,647.50 for niche engineering. Services from January, from November 28th to December 25th. Merry Christmas.
Unfortunately, I left both of those at home, both panels.
You what?
Okay, well, we can still approve it, but we just have to stop down.
I'll have to bring it to Jim to fill the sign.
I didn't hear what he said.
No, he left the paperwork to be signed.
Oh.
Only Charlie, only Bill has to sign, all right?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we pay niche engineering $1,647.50 for services rendered on Hunter's Hill subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now, that's out of 53G, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, review and approve invoice number W21-52126-2 in the amount of $1,338.75 from Ecosystem Solutions for peer review of Hunter's subdivision, August 19th, 21 to January 20th. It works pretty cheap.
Okay, I move that we pay Ecosystems $1,338.75 for the peer review of Hunter's Hill subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have the paperwork here?
No, he said he forgot.
Okay, the same, the same thing.
You have to sign.
Okay. Before we, before we get into discussing the.
The budget?
The budget. So what are these people out here doing? Why are they here?
You wanna take something out of order?
Well, I wanna know what they're doing. Why are they here? Do we owe you money?
No. I'm here to discuss the oil spill off the post road.
Well, that's coming up, oil spill, that's the oil spill at Hunter's Hill.
Oh, all right. Is that?
That's coming up soon.
Okay. How about them guys?
Boy Scout.
Eagle Scout, I know who he is.
Jacob is here to discuss his project at the Bell Marsh. He's building his preservation posts.
Okay, that should be soon.
I don't think, I don't think Charlie put it.
He has to come at public input.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do the budget request.
Fiscal year, Charlie, what about the budget?
Oh, you guys?
Lisa, what about the budget for next year?
I got it.
Next fiscal year.
All right. She gets the big bucks.
So we're not requesting.
What'd you say?
We weren't requesting an increase, but when I met with Mike, he explained to me that everyone gets a two and a half percent increase for the cost of living. So I'm getting a two and a half percent increase, and they're giving me $400 stipend for my clothing for when I rip out my pants and stuff.
Oh, look at what I found.
And we get nothing, so two and a half percent of nothing is still nothing?
Yeah, you guys still get nothing.
The last holdouts.
Who?
Daniel.
Oh, yeah.
And in that, Charlie, you guys basically have to discuss and approve your budget at your meeting, so Mike asked me how we go to the meeting, which is tonight.
Okay. Okay. Lisa, in here, do you have money requested for mailing? You do a lot of mailing for?
Yeah, she does.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
That was, what I asked for was for them to, all that needs to happen is the accountant needs to add a new line item for postage.
Postage, too.
Otherwise, it comes out of the, so it comes out of surprise anyway. Right now, I pay it upfront, and then.
I know the rule.
Yeah, and I get the, because everything we have to send out, we have to send out certified.
Right.
Unless I hand it to them, you know?
Okay, everybody had a chance to look at it?
Lisa, for last year, you had professional and technical at 10.5. This year is 1,000.
Hold on one second. I didn't change it.
No, no, I'm.
I didn't spend much out of it.
Oh, okay. Oh, actual expenditures, okay. All right, that's why. Okay. I see what you're saying, Charlie. Okay.
I mean, you guys don't have to decide on it tonight, but you definitely have to decide on it at the next meeting, so if there's anything you want me to bring up to Mike, I can.
No, I think, I'm looking through and. So we need a motion then to approve this budget request.
Yes.
Yeah, it looks like they adjusted that line.
Well, you didn't have much expenditures out of it. The line was there without the expenditures.
Yeah, I mean, it would be good to have that in case we need legal, right?
Well, you've got everything you really need as far as computers and all of that.
Yeah, I have money left in my budget as far as office supplies and things, so I, until the end of the year, I can spend some money. And what I'd like to do is, I'd like to buy some more office supplies to, because the planning board has been very good about, the planning board has been very good about letting me use folders and paper and, you know, whatever.
Well, you've got $2,000 in that budget.
Yeah, so if there's any, and I just bought this, you know?
Okay, you only spent $48 out of it last year, out of 2,000. So if you're requesting.
But that was only a half a year, up to June of last year.
Okay.
After June, I did spend some money, so.
Okay, but, okay, you do have a decent amount there for paper and the rest.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion then that we accept this budget request, format and amounts.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, Lisa, this is gonna go in.
Okay.
Brandon.
Did you pass these around?
Yes.
One of these is for you as well.
Thank you.
Now that you do that, I gotta mix your lines up.
I'll take it down now. Put this one with Jim.
Split one. That's good.
The drill?
Yeah.
What are we doing?
Brandon Fannaf, Ecosystem Solutions.
No, I know.
Representing the Franco's, 2372 Park Ave. And that plan you see before you was created by me. And you'll notice that the aerial photograph you're looking at is actually from two weeks ago, which I did a flyover with a drone myself to get up-to-date conditions, because otherwise we would have been looking at an old photograph, which, you know, just shows the house and the yard and all the sheds and junk they had around it, and not what the issue is. And what you're seeing is the issue. So that gray square behind the house is the garage that Mr. Franco built. And that's the garage that Mr. Franco got a building permit for, but Building Department did not do a routing slip to Conservation. So he started the project, I believe in good faith, but then was stopped short, and resulted in ultimately me being here with you tonight to try and resolve this issue amicably and present some mea culpa for some of the work that's already been done by proposing some cleanup of landscaping materials and frankly, junk that's been sitting around that the Franco's had started to remove, which I think that if it is removed, it'll be a very big improvement to the land.
When did you take this picture, Brandon?
Took it on about two weeks ago, January 25th, if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was before that, the two-foot, two and a half-foot snow stove that we got, which was what, two, two and a half weeks ago now?
Probably July.
Right. So there was an enforcement issue, enforcement order issued in October, saying that you had to get a restoration plan in by December. Well, you know how that always goes, but here we are now, we got it in. I met with Lisa and the Franco's last Friday.
No, I'm not here on Fridays, Thursday.
So Thursdays, yeah, last Thursday, to walk through the site, get an idea of what's going on and what needs to be done. And I think that Lisa and I had a very productive conversation. We talked about cleaning up the junk and proposing some shrubs to be planted to reclaim some of the habitat that was lost.
The habitat that was lost because of the...
The construction of the...
The concrete.
The concrete, yeah, which, which is ultimately, he wants to be a garage to, to house boats, his boat, boat of boats. Yeah. So he's gonna come in, you can see the driveway, which is, is got, um, processed gravel. It's got some ABCs, asphalt, brick and concrete, but it's all six-inch minus, so it's, it's legal stuff that goes up and around the, the footprint of the garage that he wants to build. So the, the green hashed areas are the areas where the, the most junk is. Up in the upper-left-hand corner, along the wetland boundary, there's a pile of stumps and slash and some junk that was placed there. I think it would be of a benefit to remove that. There's all the junk around the house itself. And then below the house, where you can see there's a boat, there's even more junk. And the Franco's tell me what it, what it is, is that Mr. Franco's father was a pack rat. So he just collected stuff and collected stuff. And after he passed away, he started to get rid of it, which is when, you know, this all started to happen. So he, he would like to continue to clean the area up, get rid of the junk and do some planting as, as mea culpa for what he had done. Inadvertently, inadvertently. He thought he was doing it the correct way, but got stopped short.
The cleaning up the junk would be...
That would be remarkable in itself.
Yeah, it would, it would be a good thing.
Mrs. Franco really wants it gone, wants to know why she can't do it now. I said, "Just hold off, let me go to conservation and get their blessing first."
I don't see any reason why he can't clean it up, that's for sure.
Well, do you have the, a written summary of everything? I'm following you very well with your aerial photograph. Do you also have the, uh, a written submission as to what you wanna do?
I do, and I submitted that, I think you've been reading, reading up on it already.
Oh, this is it here?
That's it.
Yeah, that's, that's the restoration plan.
Okay, all right, I just got it, okay.
Right, so, so the restoration plan, if I can go directly to the report, will be accomplished by removing debris located around the property from what I'm calling cleanup areas, which is the, the green hashed areas within the, the buffer zone of this, this isolated wetland. And I wanna note, too, that this is a isolated wetland jurisdictional under the Dighton bylaw. It, it doesn't qualify as jurisdictional under the Wetlands Protection Act for the state. So, so this is, this is an issue that's, that's being taken care of completely under the bylaw that's under your purview.
Except for the Rivers Protection Act.
Thank you, thank you. So, one thing that we did do when we were out there, we delineated and located the bank of the Taunton River. There's a blue line that goes through the property, that is riverfront area. Okay?
Okay.
Right, so once the debris's gone, if there's debris in the wetland, we're gonna put in a New England wet mix, seed mix. And if it's a cleanup area outside of the wetland, we're gonna put in a, a New England Conservation Wildlife upland mix, seed mix. In addition, there will be fifteen shrubs to be planted around the edge of the driveway areas which surrounds the garage. But the driveway and the garage will be allowed to remain. That's what we're proposing. And there'll be no further soils of film material introduced. As of right now, everything's pretty stable, even though we do have a silt fence up.
It's very flat out there.
Yeah. All right, so we're proposing a combination of arrowwood, blueberry, high bush, blueberry, spice bush and winter berry to be planted.
And one thing I requested was that those plants just be staggered, not like lined up. Just look a little more natural. And move them inside the limit of work, 'cause right now, they're outside the limit of work.
We can do that. Not a problem. So the silt fence on the left side of the garage, the plants were shown on the outside of the silt fence, put them on the, right on the inside of the silt fence, that's fine. We'll be planting a three-gallon size, so they're not gonna be the tiny little dinky shrubs, they're gonna be sizable, so they'll have a jumpstart in growth. If we go to the nursery and they say we don't have, say, arrowwood, I will pick a substitute and run it by Lisa to see if she approves. Okay? There are some invasive species, okay? There's multiflora rose out there and there's also oriental bittersweet. We would like to be able to get rid of some of that as well while we're out there doing the work. Might as well, while we're doing it.
Get rid of all of it.
Yep. Okay, and...
But my concern with that is it requires some oversight on your part, especially if the homeowner's doing it.
That's fine, that's fine. The, under the Massachusetts state law, if it's your property, you can apply the herbicide yourself without a license. The only time you need a license is when you start applying herbicides to somebody else's land. Right? So if the Franco's wanna do it themselves, they can do it. If, if you'd like there to be some oversight by me when that happens, that's fine. Can do that, too. We can report to the commission on progress. We can report to the commission when the work is done. We can give you a, what we call a construction completion report. We're also proposing to deal with this restoration as if it were a wetland replication area. So the same standards. We're going to monitor this area for progress for the next two growing seasons and provide the commission reporting on its success or failure.
So I did clarify before the meeting that I know Mr. Franco wants to move forward with this boathouse. So the restoration would come first and then the NOI, which is what I had explained to them in an email prior. So they still have to file an NOI for the work.
For the work on the garage, oh, boathouse, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
For the building.
Right.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, you have my plea?
Sure.
Given that the way this has all happened and the disposition of the Franco's, you, you heard them here last time, is there a possibility that we can put this all to rest tonight?
You mean the whole thing?
The whole thing, and not have to continue going forward and deal with complaints to Town Hall by the Franco's about everything that they have to do and the cost they are incurring because they moved forward in good faith when they got the building permit. That's my plea.
So you're asking indirectly not to file a notice of intent?
No, he, he'll file a notice of intent, but he wants...
No, I want, I wanna ask directly not to have to file a notice of intent because of this unusual case.
I think what he's trying to say is he wants the Franco's to start cleaning this up now.
Yes.
And he also wants a...
Boathouse.
An order of conditions to build his building.
Well, we can't give him an order of conditions without a notice of intent.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that.
So, so, okay, so you're looking for permission to begin cleanup tonight?
Yes.
And then you'll file the...
No.
No, I'm asking for a waiver on the notice of intent, given the way that this has all happened, and just deal with it under the enforcement order. And give, and give after-the-fact approval for the boathouse through the enforcement order, and whatever conditions you feel are necessary to make the commission comfortable with its presence.
If that is the case, and the commission wants to consider that, I would recommend we request a little more of a write-up than just the replication, restoration plan.
He's got a building permit.
He does have a building permit.
Yes, he does.
And that's part of the problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Nancy.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Nancy.
Oh, I guess. My concern is that it appears there's another town department involved. Before you make a decision and make any waivers or changes in the normal procedure, that department should be represented and be part of this discussion. You can't waive your rules and regulations if in fact another board committee employee in this town through inadvertence or anything else made an error. That's not your problem. By the same token, that other board party commission person, if something was done in that department that is incorrect, that person needs to be here and you should hear the rest of this story. I'm sitting here hearing the rest of this from, I was here last week. I can tell you right now, if the stormwater committee did something, or the Board of Assessors, which I also sit on, did something that aggrieved somebody in town and they came before you and said, "Because the stormwater committee on the Board of Assessors made an error, we want you to waive your regs", I would say to you, "No, you get the Board of Assessors or the Stormwater Committee Chairman in here and let them explain what happened, and then we will make a decision." I think it's dangerous to waive your rules and conditions, especially if another town, department, person, agency is involved in this. And I don't know if that department has waived in on this. That's, that's my feelings on this. Your rules and regs are pretty straight and they're strict. And if there were no other town departments or people involved, I wouldn't be standing here. But I caution you on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so my question, Mr. Chairman, is what threshold has been broken to involve another town department on this particular issue?
I believe she's referring to the building department.
Will the building permit... For that. So I, I as one see the cleanup beginning any time but to file a notice of intent for the...
Building of the boathouse.
Building of the boathouse, so that we can condition what's there. And you know, and I, I see all of this, and I don't know what all this here is. I mean, it looks like...
That black line is the silt fence.
No, this here, what's all this right here?
The gray?
Yeah.
That's processed gravel.
And why do we have processed gravel on this side? This is gonna be the entrance to the boathouse, correct?
Right, that, that's grading to make the foundation. It's, it's a, it's a slab-on-grade with, with some grading to make it level, so there was a bit of a slope on that side that went down.
And how, and what's the distance on this?
Between, probably about twenty-five feet.
Well, see, this is what I wanna see in a notice of intent, all of that.
Right, now, the notice of intent is also gonna require a surveyor and a site plan, you know, that, that particular expense, and, and...
Not necessarily, really.
Notice intents require a stamped plan. And RDA does not. I, I will argue that you can condition this through the enforcement order.
We can what?
Condition it through the enforcement order. And remember...
That's not, that's, that's new construction and, and that's not, uh...
And, and remember that, that with a notice of intent or an RDA, they have three years to do the work. With, with an enforcement order, you get a little bit more of a noose around their neck and that you can start fining them anytime under the enforcement order. Just, just food for thought.
I do know DEP does allow that. So if DEP does allow us to... And there's, I can think of another enforcement project in town where we're gonna go that route, where instead of having them file an notice of intent, I, I'm recommending that they actually move forward under the enforcement part. Reed Brothers, we couldn't do that because there was an ORW, otherwise we could have possibly. It, it just puts more pressure on the commission and me to make sure that it's done right because there's no DEP involved.
If that's the case, then put me in charge of oversight and reporting. I've been coming to this commission now for nineteen years. I think that I have a good reputation with the commission and that I can be trusted to do what is required to make sure that this project moves forward correctly.
We have no designs of, of anything there to know other, other than a slab. We know nothing about this project. Lisa, would, would an RDA?
I think an RDA would just require a notice of intent in this. I mean, it's within, it's in the, within the riverfront.
Yeah.
You know, so. I had told them in the emails with the town administrator that repeatedly, that they would need to do this process. And so obviously, this comes first.
When you say this process, you're talking about...
Notice of intent.
Filing a notice of intent. And this is what I see as being the, the way to go.
But I didn't, I don't expect it to be a long process. I think it can be a straightforward notice of intent.
Yeah.
And I was hoping it could just be done with your plans.
That was gonna be my, my request. If, if, I'm gonna be backed into the corner of having to do an NOI, could we use, you know, this plan or the revised version to make the commission and Lisa happy?
And all of it will just have to say approximate locations because you're not surveying. Well, what is the degree of...
Correct, well, there is a scale.
Okay.
So we have a scale, so one inch equals twelve-and-a-half feet, two inches equals twenty-five feet, right? So this is all to scale. It's taken from an aerial photograph that's very recent. If you go there today, you'll see the same exact conditions. So I think it's, it's a pretty good base map to use for an NOI if we end up having to do that. Instead of having to hire a surveyor, and you know how backed up they are, we're gonna be into spring before they can even get out there.
Okay, so Lisa, if we have them start on the cleaning of the property, the reclamation, we'll call it, and in the process, you, you will file an NOI with us maybe, I don't know, a couple of weeks and then we could, I don't know how, I don't know how busy you are, but, or, or soon, you could get, they could start working on it in the spring.
That would be good, all right.
And, and another thing, I mean, I would like, and I will talk to the building commissioner about him being present at the next meeting as well.
Okay.
Doctor who? Building Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we'll see you again next, next month on this then, I guess.
Hopefully, I can get it done fast enough. And I, I'll have to talk to the Franco's.
Are you swamped?
I am bogged down.
He's bogged down.
I know, we're gonna give them permission to start cleaning it up.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a win, I'll take it. And we'll file the NO, notice of intent with a modified version of this plan with my stamp, even though I'm not a surveyor and engineer, and move forward from there. And I will, I will consult with Lisa.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, um...
Sounds good.
Okay.
Let's see, we need, uh, I gotta see how this motion's gonna, gonna fit in.
You need these back, Brandon?
Nope.
Motion to accept the reclamation, restoration...
Put it up on your fridge.
Restoration plan?
Can you hang around 15 minutes?
Restoration plan is accepted.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so...
Restoration, yeah, restoration plan is accepted.
Okay, I move that we accept the restoration plan
With the modifications of...
project with a notice of intent to follow.
Jim, there's also a couple of modifications that we discussed at the meeting, so... For that understanding.
What was that now?
The shifting of the planting.
Okay.
Right?
And the staggering of the plantings.
The shifting and the staggering.
Okay, now, are you going to give, you, you will give that to him in writing? That, that we are going to accept a plan with, with those modifications.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, was there something else that we wanted to talk to Brandon about?
No, just me.
Lisa, was there something else that Brandon was, was, okay, no. Okay.
Zero Hart Street enforcement order. Lisa will update the commission.
Okay, so, this one, there's been actually no movement at all on. I don't know, you know. I haven't actually been down there to see, but I don't think there's much, anything else going on. This is where they were cutting on that road, along the power lines.
Oh, oh, way down, okay.
Yeah, so this one's several months old. At this point, I mean, if there's no activity and they stopped cutting, you know, we're obviously not going to issue fines. But when they do come before us for something, that's when I think we're going to have to require some sort of restoration.
Okay. Two.
Two zero five zero Horton Street.
Okay, as you recall, the homeowner came before us at the last meeting to discuss some of the activity he had done in the past. And we discussed with him that, you know, we're, we know EPA was also contacted, and EPA's throwing the ball in the Army Corps court. This alter, these alterations to the VFW and the, the riverfront, as well as the bank, the owner has agreed to allow buffer along the river to reestablish. And at this point, we, we had discussed at our last meeting that...
That's the property that you and I walked down to?
Yeah, we would, we would see what the Army Corps came back, and whatever the Army Corps required at this point. Me personally, what I had recommended to you guys, for everyone who was here might remember, if we require him to change the river at this point, it's, I feel like it's going to be more damage than it's actually going to create good. He said he would do it, but if you took a look at it, it stabilized.
Yeah.
It's, it's been that way for 14 years. It's not like it was just done. There's no fill involved that I saw, so that's a good thing. He isn't an ORW. However, there was cutting, so I asked the owner to stop cutting within the, the riverfront. So, I'll follow up with him. But in the meantime, I mean, I expect the Army Corps to get in touch with us about this one. You can see it on...
So, we'll just wait on that.
You can see it on the air photos. It's pretty clear.
We'll just continue then.
Okay. Oh, boy, this, this gal's been waiting all this time for getting paid the big bucks to come in and give us a report on the, the oil down at Hunter's Hill, Bill.
Yeah, we saw it. We were there.
I had a location map, but at this point, I think you're very familiar where...
Yeah, we just, we, we need your name. More aerial.
So, on January 12th, a...
We know your name is not Carmella or something like that. Would you tell us your name, please?
Yes, I'm Lauren Baldwin with Civil and Environmental Consultants. I work with Bill Hoyerman, who is the LSP on this oil release.
Okay. We know about the oil spill, we know about the, the vacuuming of the pond, and we know about the gallons.
Well, you know, these guys know.
Sure.
You know, because you were at the last, at the stormwater meeting where we discussed it.
Okay.
Yeah, on January 12th, there was a tanker truck that was reported to be leaking oil, and the fire department was, responded. The tank was parked in this cul-de-sac. A water, water got into a pipe under the tank, and it froze, cracked, and the oil released. The oil released onto the pavement, entered a catch basin proximal to it, and the oil then traveled through the stormwater conveyance system all the way down to the detention pond. At the time of the release, the pond was mostly frozen over. Only an area approximately 1,000 square feet right in front of the outlet was unfrozen due to the moving water. The fire department responded, they dealt with the tanker truck. Frank Corp Environmental Service was contracted to clean up the release. They applied additional absorbance. They cleaned out the catch basins and the manhole vaults for the stormwater cleanouts along the way. They applied absorbance in those systems. They applied absorbance around the outlet of the stormwater and paths around that. Additionally, on the other side of the frozen pond, the, the detention pond discharges and continues into wetlands. We put absorbance on where the water goes, you know, through and on the other side, so on the, both sides of that as well. Frank Corp has been out and has swapped out the absorbance. CUC has gone out and done assessment. We put on waiters and walked through right where the, where am I? Right where it was discharging to see if we could get a sheen. Initially, when we were out there before disturbance, there was maybe a slight, could be organic around the booms. We disturbed it, sheen did appear, but quickly dispersed. We are continuing to monitor the release through these assessments and swapping out of absorbance when needed.
Where does, where do the absorbents get disposed to?
Right now, Frank Corp is handling this disposal. They pack them into drums and then, through a manifest, gets rid of them.
Did you issue a written report?
Yeah, there was, there was a written report in the form of an email. Did you have another report of some kind, or...
No, no formal report. Mass DEP has a release tracking number associated with this. We are giving them a formal I, uh, report, depending on how it goes out. And that's going to be due to them on around March 10th. It's like March 10th or 13th.
So, your company has completed its assignment?
Oh, it's ongoing. This is the status of it so far. We are working with Mass, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to close out the release in accordance with the MCP.
And how long do you monitor it for?
That is a great question. It is going to be
It's okay.
Up to the LSP, but it's essentially, there's still a sheen there, so it's going to continue until, um...
Yeah.
Till we don't, till the, we can, yeah.
So, the DEP report that goes in March, can you guys also send Concom and the Stormwater Committee for DITN? You'll see it on the website. You can see the stormwater agents. That'd be great.
Yeah, no problem at all.
So, it's Todd Pilling, he's a stormwater agent. And then I'm Lisa Caladonia, the conservation agent. We'd like copies of those. I'm sure the fire department probably wants a copy, if not, if he doesn't already get a copy.
Yeah. Through the, the middle, it's through the, we always like notify the Board of Health and town, but we'll add you guys to the list.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to have to take over, Jim, I got to go. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is enforcement order at 578 Hart Street. It was, so we're dealing with enforcement order and an expired order of conditions. Lisa?
Okay, so, I just want to report on this. At this point, we have received an asphalt plan, but I've requested a, um, I've requested a letter from the engineer, well, pro-line engineering to certify what was done in accordance with the order and what wasn't. So, he now has a copy of the order, and he's going to be preparing, he's in the middle of preparing that letter, as of this week. Just to formalize and close this out.
Okay. You guys have any questions for Lisa? Okay, uh, two... Oh. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
You recused yourself, Bill?
Yes.
You have recused yourself.
Have what?
You recused...
That's why he left here.
Okay.
You recused yourself, yeah.
Yeah, I excused myself. To Jim.
Yes, he told me to take over, and he left. And I didn't look up to see you there, but go ahead.
There I am. We got silting from the property across the street into my wetlands twice in January and once in February. And I requested from the Conservation Commission that we try to do something to stop this. It's been going on six years. And it's already, like I said, we got, Lisa was at one of the... Lisa was at one of the, at the, one of the situations where I was getting a lot of silt from the property across the street. She took pictures. She sent them to you guys. Now, that's three violations, wetland violations, this year alone. You've issued three orders, enforcement orders in the, in the last three or four years, and, and you've lifted them. And ironically enough, there, there's still silt coming down from this guy's property onto my property, into my wetlands. You got to find a way to stop this. I'm waiting for suggestions. I want somebody to tell me what you're going to do and how you're going to do it.
First of all, you think that this commission has not tried to solve the problem?
It's this commission's... This is your job to stop this particular situation from happening. It's been going on six years. It happened twice this year in January, and once already in February. And if you get there tomorrow morning around 6:30, you will see the second violation in February. Can you please do something to stop this?
Lisa, you have something written here about the Stormwater Committee becoming involved in it.
That was Charlie's note.
Charlie?
What?
You wrote here that the Stormwater Committee has officially become involved. I thought they were.
As you know, Mr. Fournette is also on the Stormwater Committee, and he has stepped down when this has been brought up for discussion. The situation with the Stormwater Committee is that Mrs. Caladonia, Mr. Ferry, Mr. Pilling, and maybe even Mr. Agia at one point or another have all been out there during torrential rains. No question at all, there's silted water. No one, no one has been able to identify the property it's coming from. There are two properties that were brought to the Stormwater Committee as potential runoff sources, where the silt's coming from. One property owner will not allow us on the property, so there's no way in a rainstorm anyone's going on that property to see if they can find silt. The second person who, family that was initially cooperative has now also told us can't go on the property. Without specific evidence, the Stormwater Committee can't do anything. Because no one can truly say it's on this property, and here are the pictures. I've asked for pictures that are dated and timed. That's easy to do. But when the people who I rely on, I got, I don't know who else to ask. And they go up there, and they don't, they go at different times when it rains. Not one of them has been able to identify the source. That's the situation with the Stormwater Committee. It came up again at our meeting yesterday. And I've said before, without conclusive evidence, we can't take action. You know, I understand the problem that Mr. Fournette has with his property. I've seen pictures, older pictures. I've seen the, the muck in the, the pond and the dirty water. I've seen dirty water, silted water, running down the, the little ditch. Nobody can tell me where it's coming from. It's coming from somewhere, but if you can't go on the property to inspect it during a rainstorm, there's a real problem. You can't send drones over somebody's property, because in effect, that's also trespassing. You're getting evidence that... So, you know, Mr. Fournette has come to our committee and asked for help too. You started dealing with the same thing, gentlemen. You know the people I mentioned that have gone there and taken pictures. They're independent. They're looking for evidence. No one has been able to bring it and say decisively it's coming from this location. So, that's the situation with the Stormwater Committee. If you can't prove it, you can't take action.
You know, I've been there, I don't know how many times, and like, I've seen it too. I've seen the pond silted, I've seen... And, you know, we always thought it was that one that's under construction. And for a while, we could say, yeah, but now is, is there's a tremendous buffer zone. Everything that we asked, that is putting up silting barriers, it's been done, and...
And the side...
What's that?
And the side is stabilized.
And I understand Bill's problem. I, I, I really feel terrible that his property, but it's getting silted. But, uh... People are doing what we've...
Enforcement orders.
I think the storm audit committee and the Conservation Commission are in the same boat. I think if we, you, could do anything to prevent this, to take action, I think we would've a long time ago. But we all also represent the town of Dayton, and we can't accuse people or try to enforce something that there's no evidence conclusively to prove the source of it. I mean, you know, again, we represent the town of Dayton. You take action against somebody and you have no proof, we all know who's gonna get sued. The property owners will not allow us on the property.
You don't have to go on the property to get the
Bill, you've, you've heard the reports. You know the people who've made them independently. Lisa, Tommy, Todd, and Jim has been there at times. Sometimes they've been there together. But each time they come to the storm audit committee meeting, and last month, we had the same people that were here at yours that wanted to speak. And the pictures they had in hand were taken in 2019, and I said, I'm sorry, I will not accept them. This has been going on too long. Pictures from 2019 don't help me today to make a determination.
Lisa took some pictures on January
Right.
Fourth
Right, but
Of the silt coming off that property.
Where's the property line? Where's the property line? It was right on
The driveway.
It was, no, it was to the east of the driveway.
Along, right along the edge of the driveway.
Right along the edge of the property line. I don't know where it's coming from.
There's no question, there's siltation, there's runoff, there's been stuff going in the pond. Nobody disputes that.
The soil is highly erodable up there. We've all, right, you farmed it. That soil, you farmed that land, no?
No, he hasn't, nobody farmed that land.
Okay.
When it was farmed.
If, if the Conservation Commission, in whatever investigation or anything you do, come up with conclusive evidence, it is definitely at this number Hart Street, please share it with the storm audit committee, 'cause we will take action. But by the same token, we're not gonna point fingers and accuse somebody and order them to do something and end up having this, the town get sued or anything else when we don't have conclusive evidence. Anyone who's dealt with the stormwater committee knows, when there's a problem and we identify the source, we take action. He sits on our committee. He recuses himself when it comes up. We all understand the problem. But our hands are tied until we can absolutely get this. I know that Mr. Ferry and Mrs. Caladonia looked at something like a stormwater that may, a stone wall that might've had a break, and it might be allowing water here, there, or everywhere. But when Mr. Ferry separately, individually, and Mrs. Caladonia separately and individually, both say, we don't know where it's coming from, and we're taking a guess.
That part, I just have no idea. I don't understand that. You can see it running off his driveway. You can stand in the middle of the road
Bill, I'm not gonna argue with the point. We don't have pictures showing it.
She does have pictures of that.
She just got through saying she can't determine the boundary between the properties. This is part of what goes around and around.
Running out of his driveway.
So, I'm not gonna argue with you, Bill.
Okay.
I know what she said. We all heard it tonight. I know what has gone on at the storm audit committee meeting. I assure you, gentlemen, if the day comes that we can identify the source, we will take action and we will notify you too. But up to this point, each storm audit committee meeting, we have an item that says update on, and we list projects. This has come up repeatedly. We still don't have evidence that we can act on.
You can be there tomorrow morning at 6:30, anybody?
I'm not going on private property, Bill.
No, no, you can stand in the middle of Hart Street and watch it come down his driveway.
If Tommy and Lisa and Jim and Todd say they haven't been able to determine, I am not gonna stand in the road.
Okay.
No, this is sitting on a ledge.
I know.
It's sitting on a ledge. You have trenches and ditches between all these properties. It's coming down there. Wanna solve it? Put the pressure on the town. Get Tommy Ferry to totally rework that drain. Swale it and riprap like the state does on a lot of their stuff. Do the entire length. Vacuum out the ponds at the end, and that's the end of it. Monitor, you riprap, and when it gets dirty, clean it.
Don't forget the erosion, we need erosion controls in the middle somewhere. If that's gonna happen, we need erosion controls, that's all I'm saying.
You're gonna have erosion control if you ride around and look at some of the new projects on the highways. They're putting in swales and they're stepping it with rock. They're building ponds and they're making it climb up. The stone catches the runoff. They can monitor it, it runs over, it's clean, and it steps down through. But this isn't the only lot. There's six of them down there.
Right.
And all six of them contributed to all of this because we've been fighting with this ever since the contractor went in and made a pig of himself and stripped the whole place. That's on a ledge, and I hope that's on camera because you don't do this. And a lot of these guys can't work on slopes or grates. I don't know what more to say. You know what I'm saying? And it's been mentioned to step this and different things. You know, whatever. I mean, this guy can probably tell you, you can't take a single row of hay bales and catch 400-foot runoff. Am I right or wrong?
You're correct, sir.
That's right. But this is what's been going on. Then we try and do something. They don't like it, they don't wanna do it. That's what it is.
Well, I must say, he's been very cooperative for the past year, and the site is stabilized now.
Yeah, I realize that. But, like I say, you, you have, first of all, the, the boundary lines, that's all on a ledge.
Right.
So every time it rains, it eats away a little bit more, a little bit more.
Getting gullies, yeah.
You know.
Where, where does it go, Jack?
Where's it go? It goes downhill. Gravity takes it downhill.
Brandon, you wanted to
No, Brandon's just listening.
Okay.
Jim, did you have a question?
No.
None?
I, I didn't know. When, you are, you said you're, oh no, that was the answer about the stormwater.
The ponds, no. No, we're still, are we still on Hart Street? I mean, did you have a question about the ponds?
No.
Okay.
Okay, County Street, David DeRosa.
So, since David came before us last, he hasn't, he, you know, he says he's gonna
I'm sick of talking, get in.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, it was on there because he specifically wanted to move some dirt around, some piles, and do work on the site, you know, he wanted to be able to use the loom. Well, okay, well, you've gotta file, you know, you've gotta flag, get it flagged. He had the woman come before us
No.
Basically saying, these are isolated areas. Well, we don't agree with that. And we said, let's see something on a plan. Since then, she hasn't brought us a plan. We haven't seen any work. No, no more disturbances have occurred there that I know of. It's simply used as a lot for someone to park their company vehicles at this point. The site is establishing, it's, or established. There's no, it's stabilized. So at this point, I would just suggest we take this off unless there appears to be more work or if there's another complaint. It's my recommendation, we take this off this list.
All right, I guess we can do that. I'll entertain a motion.
I don't know if a motion is needed.
Yeah, I don't think you need a motion.
Okay, we got She doesn't think a motion is needed either.
Okay.
Okay, Cedar Street, glad to go.
So Cedar Street, I, hi. We have the owner here. We're not gonna go over any plans or anything, but I just wanted to give us an update of where things are at, 'cause it's been several months.
Many months.
Huh?
Many, many months.
Many months, yeah.
So, as you've seen the proposed plan and everything, going from here on out, the plan is fine with me. Just one issue that I
Can you just start at the beginning? Like the very basics? 'Cause the commission needs
Yeah, it's, this is back in April.
We need an address.
1566 Cedar Street. My name's Matthew Tozzo.
Hey, Brandon.
One at a time. Your name, please.
Matthew Tozzo.
Matthew.
Yes.
I just want a summary of an update of where things are at. I don't expect you to go over the plan details at all, 'cause I know those are still in the works.
So, Steven Schmeele's out. Steven Schmeele, the botanist?
Is out?
Yeah, I, we've been waiting too long. I mean, we've been, since April, waiting for him to come up with my plans and with, that's nothing with the commission or anything, just lack of communication with my botanist and my engineer. We finally got some plans and just, with lack of communication, I've just decided to go with a different botanist and engineer at this point. The plan that you
You're gonna switch engineers altogether now?
Well, so the plan that you've seen?
Yeah.
I'm completely fine with it, and I had asked him several times to just do a slight revision and a site review. Just 'cause there's one area that we had seen in the back corner that it was already growing in and it was stuff from previous that I hadn't disturbed. So I just didn't see us disturbing that anymore, but he just kept skipping over that for some reason with you. I don't understand why.
Okay, so we're talking about a lot of disturbance and a lot that he hasn't done, but a lot that was there before. Without looking at a plan, which I was really happy that you were getting really far along.
No, I'm, I'm
So for you to fire your botanist at this point, that doesn't stand very well with me, and I don't appreciate that.
No, no, that's not the problem. The problem is, I mean, I've seen the emails back and forth from you. You've waited on updates, waiting on updates, waiting on updates, and it's just
But that would be on the engineer.
Which unfortunately, listening to my botanist, he was dealing with engineer. Apparently, I should've dealt with the engineer myself, just 'cause of getting delayed so much with it and just waiting on him. So it's just the fact of, you have the plan, you've seen the plan. I'm completely fine with that, and you guys have agreed on it. It's just there's that one area in the back corner that I just said I think would cause more disturbance.
The last thing I talked to Steven about was he, you, and I were gonna have a site visit out there.
Right.
That's what I thought was gonna happen after this meeting.
Yes, yeah.
But now you're telling me no. Who are you hiring?
I have John D'Souza out of Taunton, on Court Street in Taunton.
On where?
Court Street in Taunton.
Wetland, he's a wetland scientist?
Yep. Well, so you have the plan, you've seen it all, so I'm completely fine with the way it is. As if anything, all we would need to do is just maybe revise that corner if we could meet out there and go over that.
Okay, but the problem is, your survey data
Right.
Is all owned by Zenith.
Right, so I'm, I didn't say anything with Zenith.
Okay, so you're keeping Zenith?
He did all the plan. I mean, yeah, maybe he was delayed a lot, but I never got any communication from him because I thought Steven was taking care of all that for me. So, that's my only issue. And like, just a lot of lack of communication, that's all.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in and explaining it, but I would like, I would seriously like us to come to some conclusion.
Right.
Honestly, I mean, at this point, 'cause it's been so long.
Yes, oh yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see this restoration done in the spring.
I would've liked to have seen it in the fall. We, if we were on track, we should've been able to do all that restoration, no problem in the fall. But obviously, just the, you've seen, you've been in contact, just delays and delays and delays.
That I reviewed, and I took the time to review it, that Steven submitted to me, and now you're telling me none of that's gonna pertain to your project and I'm gonna have to start all over with another person?
Well, if you can go by the restoration plan that he's already designed and
No, I need a, I need a narrative that explains it all, that not just a plan. I need details on how this is gonna get accomplished.
Right.
And Steven and I were really, like, 95% of the way being done with it. And now I have to start over? I mean, this is grounds for fining. I don't appreciate this. This is not good. There's way too much going on in this town for stuff like that to happen. It's been a year.
It's, April will be a year. And you guys, you met with them, Lisa, you know I've been more than cooperative with everything that needs to be done, even for stuff that was done prior to me. More than willing to do whatever needs to be done. Like I said, I would've had the restoration done last year, you know?
I think what was going on with this, this is the one I'm talking about, I said we don't need to file a notice of intent.
Right.
We don't need to file a notice of intent. We can do it under the enforcement order. Filing a notice of intent on this would make it drag out.
Right.
Steven and I were going back and forth about it. So if you think he was dragging his feet
No, no, multiple times I did reach out and say, hey, I understand we're waiting on the engineer for design, but where are we at with this? Like, I know you guys obviously just waiting and waiting. Like, I did that one time meetup with you guys on site. We met last, towards the end of the year, like, fall, and we were supposed to just keep that ball rolling right there. And I've reached out multiple times, and last minute today, I said, what about this one area still? And he just wanted to continue forward the way it just was, and he had a little fallen out with me as well. It's, I do apologize for that, but I am still ready. I can have this ball completely rolling, I mean.
Who do you, who are you gonna have? Or you said someone from Court Street?
John D'Souza.
Never heard of him.
What's his name?
John D'Souza.
John D'Souza.
Instead of Steven, huh?
This was decided today when he did not want to.
And when do you expect to hear from him?
I can talk, have him tomorrow.
Do you have a, you are in agreement with him for services already?
I can, I threw phone calls today, late this afternoon. I can have that, it was all quickly discussed.
All right, keep Lisa updated, please, with
You're, you will be absent next week, right, Lisa? You're absent next week.
Yeah, I'm not here.
Well, that gives him a week's time to get you information.
As I said, we can, the complete plan that's been designed now is no issue, so.
He's been waiting a year to get going, so another week's not gonna
No, I know.
No, and that's kind of what he was kind of talking about today, like, oh, we'll just postpone it again. And I just felt it wasn't right just to keep postponing, keep postponing. Granted, we're not gonna do anything till springtime, but let's just get this locked in and figure it out.
Okay. Good. Okay, I guess you did what you did, so
So this is what I would really like the commission to do. I would like the commission to decide tonight that if we do not receive a restoration plan and a narrative on this by a certain date
Yep.
Then there is a possibility we would start issuing fines. I mean, how many
You know, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and yet Matt has been so cooperative. Let's just say we would like to have information coming in from John D'Souza within a couple of weeks.
Right, I mean, like I said, the restoration plan that was designed by Zenith is
Is fine.
It's, it's been, I mean, I just need to
That, that plan's okay.
I mean, I, I don't wanna sound threatening with that because he has been very cooperative.
Cooperative, but then he gets to the point where he's going to be issuing, and now he's gonna back out on his wetland scientists. So how cooperative is that?
But he, John D'Souza is a wetland scientist, you said?
From, yeah, he was highly recommended to me by Louis Freitas, which is a Taunton commission, Conservation, sorry.
Okay, I know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's what I
Okay, let's
April 10th is when I got my letter. April 15th, you actually met me out on site, like
Okay, let's, well, our next meeting is in March. Let's see if we can get all the work done, the narrative and everything by
March 17th.
March, March 17th.
March 17th is our next meeting, so that March seventeenth is our next meeting, so that doesn't give me any time to review it. But if we at least have it in hand, then we can make, we can review it for the next meeting.
That seem reasonable to you?
Unless you want-
March seventeenth, that gives you a month to have, uh, John do a narrative and to have all the, the mapping that you need done.
Right, well, the mapping, like I said, is all been completed, and we can work off of that map, correct?
If, if you're still using Zenith-
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Cause I need to call Zenith tomorrow just to confirm everything, get my hard copies anyways.
Okay.
Well, I mean, there's, there's actually points where we've asked staking to occur. The, the reason why maybe it's dragged out is because we've gone back and forth about what is actually required. You've got a, you've got wetland in fill-
Yeah.
Wetland fill, barf zone fill, work within the twenty-five foot, work within the fifty foot. You know, it's not really cut and dry, so there's also planting, so there's like a number of different components to this.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay, County Street, I guess, so?
Twenty-three seventy-one County Street Enforcement Order, Lisa.
Okay, yeah, um, so the, the follow-up with them is they're, they've designed it to a point where they need to compensate for, this is, this is the addition that was put on, um, without a order of condition, so nota-, notice of intent was filed. It's within the riverfront.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So just to remind you, so now we're at the point where they, the engineers have designed it to compensate for the flood zone, uh, being in a bordering land subject to flooding as far, as far as the coastal flood zone. Um, last email went back and forth on February second. Um, the owner, David Berdows, told me that he saw a rough diagram, and there's a fourteen by twelve room that does not have a foundation under it. Um, he said they're on con-, it has concrete pillars, and I don't know if that would make the size of my, the pond that the putting in for the compensation smaller. So he's trying not to have to move his garden as well. They're just working out some details of that. That one Stephen Schmeele is working on. He flagged the wetlands, and he's submitting the report on that. Um, otherwise, there's no other, there's no further.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Oh, ten thirty-five Williams Street.
Did we skip over Elm Street?
Yeah. So that, that one, I was just waiting for some seeding.
Oh, that's the one we just did.
Okay.
Seeding will occur in the spring.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, what happened to twenty-three seventy-one County Street?
We just discussed-
We did that.
I thought you were talking about twenty-five sixty. Twenty-three seventy-one, it's not a waterfall project. That's the illegal filling.
Oh. I'm out of order. I just described twenty-three Pleasant, twenty-three ninety-six Pleasant Street, I'm sorry. Okay. Twenty-three seventy-one County is the railroad right of way. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Um, so on that one, the, you, as you remember, the attorney came before us, and he hasn't been back because from what he understands, the owner doesn't want to move forward on the restoration until the other abutters are held accountable. Um, Nancy can update us, but basically, the stormwater committee wrote a letter to the abutters.
So this also is a stormwater issue, so this is another one we have together. Um, the attorney for the property owner, as she said, twenty-three seventy-one County Street, uh, their, uh, reason for not taking any action is you haven't gone after the other people who have also illegally dumped in the railroad bed. They were identified, uh, two properties. One north of twenty-three seventy-one, immediately north, that has, the house actually faces Pleasant Street, and the other one is just south of, uh, twenty-three seventy-one, and that one faces County Street. Uh, certified letters were sent, told them that we had complaints about illegal dumping and filling of the railroad bed, and we have asked them to come to our March meeting. So that's where we are with that. And, um, Mrs. Grassi notified the attorney for twenty-three seventy-one that the town has sent those letters, and we intend to meet with them. And all three of those property owners, um, will be expected to, uh, respond, clean up the mess. Uh, one of these properties, uh, also is, um, how can I say it? Two properties actually have frontage on Pleasant Street. One has gone back far enough to, to cause the filling. Any other, the County Street residents we talked about, it seems like everyone thought it was a good idea to dump the stuff there. So, um, I, I think, Mr. Digits, you were out there for the site visit that time, and you saw the back of twenty-three seventy-one, and you saw north and south, so that's what we're dealing with, so. You'll have an update at your next meeting, because we'll know the day before whether or not anyone's gonna respond to us, and if not, we'll have to go further.
Okay.
Thanks, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Did you do Elm Street then, too?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, do you want me to say it again?
No, no. Ten thirty, okay, we, we gotta do ten thirty-five Williams Street.
Okay, um, so this gentleman hasn't been as cooperative, um, as of recent. My last email went out, um-
Is this the Reed property?
No, it's next door.
Next door, north or south?
North.
North of them?
Yeah. All right, let me pull up the most recent email.
So they have a file number?
This is the garage, right?
The garage, yeah, but he had been doing cutting in the back. Um, so on February second, I followed up and said, I'm writing as a follow-up as requested by the Conservation Commission. It does not look like we'll see an application in time for our February meeting. Will you be filing in time for a March meeting? Please advise. Spring is just around the corner. And his response was immediate. No one will be there, I just got the quote from Outback, and we will be proceeding with them. Maybe next, next month, we will have a better answer for you. Um, so, you know, that was, sorry, I'm reading it backwards. That was the January thirteenth response. And February second is what I just read. Second. Okay. Lots of emails here. For having administrative staff really helps. Okay. Okay, so he responded, March or April, haven't met with Outback, we had COVID two weeks ago. When it gets done, it gets done, I'm extremely busy, this is not my top priority.
That's Williams, the owner of Williams Street?
Robert Martin.
Okay.
Um- And then I responded, hi, Robert, I understand, and I hope you feel better soon. Although this is not a top priority for you, please note the garage and yard is within the Conservation Commission jurisdiction. The work is within our regulated area, and you can be fined for it if it isn't, if, if there isn't cooperation. If we don't receive a draft plan prior to the March meeting, we will discuss fines and/or illegal action. So his response, that's fine, do as you feel. You need to do it if not filed by March. I would have not been in the position if the town had not led me in that direction. Um, he said my priority was just to build, start to finish, multiple town officials have inspected and signed off. Um, I will go through the process to get the Conservation Commission stuff done with the town, but again, I have a business to run, and I'm extremely busy, so this is not a top priority. Um, but it will get done. If you want to pursue legal action, let's go, I don't care, I'm only wrong here because of the misleading. Um, so then he said, I ha-, if I have time next week, I will go see Outback and get the process started, but my business is what feeds fam-, my family and seventeen others. So, you know, I mean, my response to him after that was, I forwarded to you, and then I said, Robert, I certainly don't want to have to go that route. However, it has been almost a year since we discussed it initially. I will place you on the agenda for March seventeenth. So that's where we're at.
Okay. Twenty-three ninety-six Pleasant.
See how much fun I've been having?
Yeah. David Berdows, notice of intent filing.
Right, so that's the one that I read you the email there, moving aroun-, around the, um, compensation for the coastal storm flowage.
Okay.
His addition is on pillars. He wants to make sure he doesn't lose his garden, so they're, they're reworking some stuff, and Stephen Schmeele is involved, the wetland scientist is involved.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, how about, uh, discuss the complaint referred by DEP regarding Maris Lane subdivision?
Yeah, so I received an email from DEP. They received a complaint, um, the email was received on January twenty-fourth. There, we, the complaint reported that on Center Street, um, by Maris Lane, a wetland abutting Center Street and east of the driveway entrance to Maris Lane had been completely drained and looks as though it is about to be filled. The complaint states that a pipe was installed from the wetland under Center Street years ago to drain the wetland water over to the property across the street on the south side of Center Street. The property owner has concerns about the water discharged to his land and also the wildlife nearby. I had tried to find wetland info located at this address, but I could not find any. Could Dayton Conservation Commission investigate this complaint and report back to us? Thanks. Jauway Wang, environmental engineer with the Wetlands and Waterway Program. And I responded, hi, Jauway, I'll look into this and report back. She said, thank you, have a great day. Hi, Jauway, I've conducted a site visit as well as had discussions with the DPW director, Mr. Tom Ferry. The DPW director recently asked the developer to add some survey stakes as they are finalizing the sidewalks and the site drainage. Additionally, at the east side of the entrance to Maris Lane, there is a new riprap that is part of the riprap sediment trap and water quality sa-, swale they were required to put in. I have confirmed this is what is required per the approved development plans. I have confirmed with Mr. Ferry that no additional water is leaving or entering the site on either side of the street, so there is and will be no water level changes. The town does however maintain the culvert by cleaning debris as needed. Please feel free to reach out to me. If anyone has additional questions or concerns, please confirm receipt of this email. Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, well, we haven't had this kind of rain in years either.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, well, there's more.
This Maris Lane we're talking about?
No.
Yeah. Um, several-
I don't believe that there's, the complaint is valid.
It came from someone.
I know it came from somewhere.
Yeah.
But there's, it's a little swamp that the water runs through-
Yeah.
It barely have any water in it. There's none going across the street.
Right, and the water maybe, so there is-
There is a, there is a pipe halfway between that road and the property line on the south side of that project. That's like been there forever. That's almost as old as Charlotte, that pipe.
Maybe adjacent, gotta be. Cause I don't see any water running across the street. I travel up and down that road every day.
Yeah, no, it's only like extremely high, but there's been a pipe there forever.
Yeah, well, there's also some, um, drainage easements going on, on that project too, so.
The two, the two houses he's building now that are on the west side of the road-
Yeah.
Are elevated.
Yeah.
But surrounding the, the house, there's, there is-
Right, it's-
And, and it's not filled with water. After you talked about that, I drove in and out of there three times-
Yeah.
And I don't see any water. So it can't be going into the property adjacent.
Right.
I don't know where it's going. I don't know who's complaining.
I explained that, um-
I don't think it's valid.
Now, you're talking, okay, you dealing, okay, with the, with the house as you're going into Maris Lane, the house on the left?
Yeah, they're building two houses.
Yeah, but you're, you're talking about the complaint, where you think it's a complaint?
I mean, she's been before, before complaining about the, the development. But I looked, the houses are there and there are little valleys right next to each house, so it can't be running in that property.
Right.
The swamp is barely got any water in it.
It's a neighbor on the opposite side of the street.
And that's where the drainage is.
It's the neighbor across Center Street, but, um-
Across Center Street.
So anyways, I've told them that, um-
You told who, Lisa?
The culvert, DEP, that the culvert is not part of the development. Um, so I just explained that.
It's been there forever.
And I let them know, I was not involved with any of the permitting for that, that's, this is what I found, um-
It'd be nice if, when they have a complaint, if they can take a picture of the damage.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill.
Yeah.
True.
Hello.
Boy, we reach public input.
Your turn.
Well, the public, the last of the public is here.
Public input and Lisa, okay, you're-
I received, so the reason we invited you in was-
Yes.
We received a complaint from an abutter.
Abutter, what do you claim, named himself?
Huh?
He put a name on the, on the complaint.
Mister, Mister Roderick, an abutter complaint, complained, um, that there was cutting being done, and asked what was happening, so I, Tom Ferry and I went hiking out there, uh, in the snow, that was fun.
It was fun.
And, um, you know, we found that you were using the, you were using the, the trail, the, the wildlife tr- trail. You weren't, didn't appear that you cut along the path, but you did cut a live branch up.
That was a modest thing. We presumed it was that due to, at the base of the tree, it is halfway out, rooted out of the ground, so we came to the assumption, inclusion that it was, it was gone, dead, done, probably messed up in a storm. So we assumed it was dying or died out. So that's the only reason why we did that. We didn't have any intent to damage or cut any actual live, living, environmental trees, bushes, anything. It just was a mistake.
This was his Eagle Skull project.
I know, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um-
If he'd asked me to cut the limb, I would've.
Have, have neighbors, you, you go in from, what's, what is it, Pleasant Street? That you, that you-
I didn't go in that way, but you may have.
We use the, um, west entrance.
Yeah.
Oh, parking lot on Cow-, okay, you go in-
The west entrance.
Okay, um, wait a minute, so, okay, wait a minute, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to picture all this. So, so he goes by in that parking lot then, you get the little grassy area, then you take the-
No, he didn't go in that way.
What?
He didn't go in that way. Right?
No, he did, Lisa, he went in through the parking lot at, uh, the west entrance.
It's the, the west entrance parking lot where there's the, um, there's a post egg right where you walk in. We took it right at that, and we walked over the rocks and went right to it.
Okay. It's not the way I went.
I'm, I'm still confused.
So he went in along one thirty-eight, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And your stand is going to be, okay, once you, once you go down to the- And your stand is going to be, okay, once you, once you go down to the marsh, you took a left.
No, I took a right.
Took a right to the island.
He put an observation platform on that big rock.
He hasn't put it in yet, I have photos, but.
We're working on it.
And he has photos.
Why don't you let him explain? He can do it better.
Go ahead. Tell us what you did.
Right now, currently, as of last week, we, um, we're working on.
Okay. Okay.
No, no, they're all different.
Yeah, but they could, they could.
Yeah, well, they gotta stay together.
Okay.
I'll pass the three of them down.
Yeah, as of last Saturday, we were, we were, we currently have the, um, the base of it built, like just the main bottom floor frame of the observation post. We're gonna try and finish it. Currently, that's what we have done and hopefully, three quarters of this weekend into next weekend, have, we should hopefully have it done within two to three weeks. That's what our goal is, two, three, four weeks if weather complies. Only reason it's been taking this long is because of the snow, the ice running, it's, it was unsafe to go out there. It's too heavy, but.
Okay, so.
We should have it done within two, two, three, four weeks the most.
Okay.
So you're carrying the material out there?
We, we, at least yes, uh, last week, we, my mom, my mom, we packed it onto her car and we, each piece we brought out there by ourselves. We didn't use any, any power proven, anything like that, anything, like vehicles went out there, it was us hand by hand.
I don't think you need any more chainsaws.
No, we're, nothing, no more cutting, the only thing that'll be cut is the wood we bring.
So one thing Tom Ferry and I did was we kinda like looked at the vistas that you would maybe wanna. And Tom knows based on between that and where a good vista would be and the simple fact that we'd like you to stay, there's pink flags at the base of the ledge. Those pink flags are the wetland flags, so we'd like you to stay fifty feet away to maintain that.
When we get out there, um, hopefully this Saturday, we're gonna try and do is we're gonna pull it back and the door should go right more, so it's more like you see the gap, I don't wanna describe it, but so it like lines up with the back area.
So you're gonna move it east?
Yes.
Yeah.
Back it off the edge more, just more to the, of how it's looking.
Nestle it in, yeah.
So it's more centered is the word, whole entire rock versus just.
Right.
We have.
Okay, now, so this is, you're putting this stand, uh, the op, observation deck, is that, was it? What's the correct, that?
The observation post deck.
It's, it's on a rock, it's not in the marsh?
No, it's on, it's on rock. It's no marsh, no wetland underneath it, it's just one giant rock.
Now, okay.
Putting it, he's putting it fifty feet off of the, at least fifty feet off of the wetland.
What's sticking out, what's gonna stick out over the top of the.
Okay.
That's the action platform. Good job.
How easy or difficult is it to get to that stand from, from the parking lot?
It's pretty simple, honestly.
Easy once my project is finished.
Oh, oh, you're talking about, you're gonna have a platform?
No, we're gonna have a walk, a boardwalk all the way out there.
Okay.
As of, as of right now, it's really not that difficult. If you're in low tide, you could, there's a, like a rock wall that slightly goes into the water, you can take that over and then you go basically straight to it. If that's, if the hi, tides do hide, there's a plank over on the left side you can walk over to and just walk around over to it, it's quite simple.
Okay, okay.
It's also close to the other trail that leads to the railroad bed.
Right, that's the way I went with Tom. We went in through Hart Street, we went south on the.
Okay, on, on that little, the gate, you open the gate and you drove all the way down.
Then we went west towards, in between the Apple Orchard and Percy's.
Yeah.
And then we went south.
The Apple Orchard and Dyton Conservation Commission, that's not Percy's property anymore.
Right, perfect, even better.
Yeah.
And then we went south again and we kept going south and it got, got wet.
Isn't there a farm, there's a farm back there too?
Yeah.
Next floor. Yeah, 'cause I was down there one time hunting and there were bullets flying over my head, somebody was taking target practice.
That was mellow.
You know, that's one of the things at some point I want to talk to you guys about.
Anyway, uh, these guys have been sitting around long enough.
Um, look, continue with your project and, uh.
It's done, it's done.
Oh, it's done? Oh, super.
It, he just said it's gonna take two, two or four more weeks, depending on the weather.
Yeah, weather looks good right now, so if.
Do you have all the material out there?
All the material is, we just, that's all we have out there right now, we're, we're done. This Saturday, we're gonna bring the rest of it out and.
Minus the chainsaw.
Yeah, of course, we're not, there's gonna be no more cutting, only, only, they said only cutting we'll ever do is the wood we bring out there. And we're not, anything that's out there right now won't be touched.
No. Good old Tony, don't even watch him with binoculars.
Weather looks good, should have it done Saturday. If not, it'll be the next week.
East side of the marsh though, essential. Pretty much east side of the marsh.
As far as the path to use, you know, just be sensitive of the moss.
Gosh.
Yeah, usually go out there by myself first to make sure I can find the safe path, if there's a mess of anything, and then I bring everyone else through after.
Okay, sounds good. Let us know when it's done and send pictures.
Yeah.
Tony.
All right, okay.
He's still playing tic-tac-toe over here.
Yeah. Okay, so. Okay, yeah, that's all, that's all that grass is here, right?
Yes, but then the observation platform is here.
Okay, and so over here, there's all water.
It's all, it's marsh.
Yeah, marsh.
It's all marsh.
Okay, and we own over, over here.
Yeah, that's Tony.
Oh, no, Tony's here.
Okay, Tony's got a piece of land like, a piece of marsh like this.
Okay, so we own over here, most of it, not all of it.
We own all of this too.
Yeah.
I have a question, did we buy that conservation land or was it donated?
We bought it.
Okay, wait, uh, it's, it's bedtime for, uh.
Bedtime for me, I gotta drive an hour.
Okay, you know.
Jacob, thank you very much.
It was a complaint. We're satisfied with what you've done and, uh, uh, we don't have any complaints for, for anything and keep up the good work.
Gotcha, thank you.
I have a question.
Do you guys see this?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, you guys have good.
I have a quick question before you go. The footings of that?
They said they saw it.
They saw it.
How are the footings stabilized?
As in like the posts and how?
Yeah.
Um, so how we're doing it is we have, they, it came with the concrete blocks obviously and we also have, um, cement mix, we're also putting with the extra support if these are sit, seat right. So it's, it's a mix of two, both of those and the posts are gonna get cut there to, um, make sure they're the right level. So we're gonna, this, tomorrow, Saturday, we're gonna have them all leveled out right. We're gonna cut the posts to the right height, put them in the, put them in the cement blocks and then if, if need be, we'll add some cement mix as well to keep it stable.
Okay, there's no drilling or anything involved?
Now, uh, what's high school you go to?
Uh, Down Road Regional High School.
How far along is it?
It's, uh, almost done, honestly, it's just putting it all together at this point.
Okay.
You wanna go out there when it's done?
Of course. I'll make it.
You could go out there, yeah.
Okay.
Why don't you wait till my boardwalk's done and you can.
When you're gonna, when's that gonna get going?
I'll be your age. I'll be your age.
You both talk at the same time and I miss both of you.
I said I'll be your age when it's done.
Oh, no. No, no, we'll get it, we're gonna get it done this year, at least the engineering.
Well, you gotta get going with the permitting.
Thank you, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Dragging your father along too.
Okay, um.
We're done.
No, public input, that's it.
Correspondence.
Correspondence.
Any correspondence, Lisa?
Um. No, I think we've probably covered everything.
Okay. My motion that we adjourn at nine twenty-one.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You want this? Lisa, you want this? You have pictures?
I have pictures, but I'll put them in a pile.
I'll take them pictures.
Are you guys officially adjourned?
It's gonna be a little work, come on.
Adjourned.